The Information Technology and Government Affairs Committee will now come to order. It's a special meeting on this day, Tuesday, January 12, 2010. Welcome, everyone, into the new year here at City Hall. This is our first meeting of this committee since 2010 commenced. And the membership in this committee has changed since last year. We now have myself, the chairman, Tony Cardenas, also council member Jan Perry, and also council member Dennis B. Zine. At this present time, we do have a quorum, as council member Perry and myself are present. So with that, we'll open up this committee meeting, and we will announce that Items 2 through 10, we will receive and file those items, as the relevancy of those items, as far as activity in their respective jurisdictions, both state and federal, are, in fact, not what they were at that time, so we will receive and file them until such time those bills or pieces of legislation are revived and/or they find new bill numbers, et cetera. Okay? So we'll receive and file Items 2 through 10. Okay? That having been done, we will now go to Items, announce Item 11. We'll continue Item 11 for 30 days. So in the month of February, we will hear that item at the appropriate meeting. And with that, we'll probably have more discussion on Item Number 1, so hopefully we can briefly run through Item Number 12, and then we'll move back to Item Number 1 on the agenda. Item 12.
And Item Number 12 is a report from the chief legislative analyst relative to the city's position on AB 1029, which would protect certain low-income seniors in the state of California from mortgage foreclosure pursuant to resolution. Perry Rosendahl.
Good afternoon.
My name is Chris Concepcion with the CLA's office, and the resolution before you recommends support of AB 1029, which aims to protect low-income seniors of California from mortgage foreclosure for a period not to exceed five years. The CLA report before you also supports the recommendation contained in the resolution. AB 1029 seeks to uphold the rights and privileges pertaining to the senior citizens and disabled citizens' property tax postponement law. The postponement program provides an opportunity for low-income seniors and disabled citizens of California to postpone their property taxes in times of financial difficulty for up to five years. SBX 38, which was signed into law in February of 2009, suspends the property tax postponement law, which obviously raises questions in terms of the existing participants in the postponement program. AB 1029 establishes that existing participants in the postponement program will protect the senior and disabled citizens who participated in the program by or prior to February 20 from foreclosure. Additionally, this prohibits any lender from filing a notice of default to any senior citizens who are unable to pay their postponed, their property tax, who are currently participating in the program. At this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. It's my understanding right now that the foreclosure process, when someone, a property owner, has a delinquency on their property taxes, it actually takes the government five years before they can actually put that property to sale. So therefore, I'm wondering, does the five years run concurrent from the first payment that was missed, or does the foreclosure process begin after the initial five years with this category of seniors?
From my understanding, the foreclosure process itself begins as soon as there is a delinquent payment and the statement is issued to the renter, if that answers your question.
So basically, this is a protection of the occupant, and therefore protecting the occupant from the delinquency of the owner of the property.
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know the history of this legislation, whether or not it had a different bill number, it failed or passed? Has it gone to a governor's desk in the past and got vetoed?
I'm not sure if it's had another, if it's had a number title or a bill number in the past. I do know that currently, it was re-referred to the Committee on Revenue and Taxation after previously being referred there in the first place, and the author of the bill retracting it for some minor amendments and additions to the bill.
You mentioned the word tenant, but I'm getting a bit confused. Did you mean the occupant? Because we're talking, usually a tenant is referred to somebody who is leasing or subleasing from the owner, and an occupant can, in fact, be a tenant or an owner of a third party.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so you're talking about the occupant. So this is owner-occupancy properties, right?
That's correct.
So in other words, if we have a senior who happens to be low-income, and lucky them, they may have invested in property, rental property, say a duplex somewhere, and they're delinquent on their property taxes, this does not apply to a rental unit of other occupants. This only applies to a principal residence of that qualified senior as categorized in this bill, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
No, it just obviously means to protect people who don't have a fallback position. So that's why I wanted to go ahead and support this, people on fixed incomes, people who are disabled.
Okay, all right. And this talks about during, now, this would be in effect during any economy going forward, should it become law? I thought I saw some language in that said something about during difficult times, what have you, they're just referring to the difficult times of the individual who's delinquent on their property taxes? Are they talking about difficult times like we're experiencing right now globally and nationally and locally?
Yeah, this particular legislation refers to only the individuals who are incurring times of financial hardship.
Okay.
So not necessarily the economy, but referring to the individual.
Got it. Because I have heard of legislation that it would be enacted based on the economic situation. I think it's kind of hard to ascertain where that breakpoint is, but, okay. So hard times of the individual, disabled or 62 years and older, and of a certain income category, lower income category. All right. We'll now go to public comment, seeing no more questions from the committee. Is anybody here for public comment on Item Number 12? Item Number 12 is open for public comment, seeing and hearing no one come forward. I do not have any public comment cards before me, so therefore, public comment is now closed. So with that, we will adopt the motion and move it forward. Okay? Thank you very much. We now move to Item Number 1.
And Item Number 1 is a discussion item, which is discussion with representatives of the mayor relative to the state and federal legislative agenda for 2009-10.
One of them. This hearing is being recorded, but not visually. Just want to announce that we now have a full complement of a quorum. Our third member of the committee, Dennis Zine, is present. So with that, we'll commence with the presentation on Item Number 1.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Jim Clark. I'm the director of federal relations in the mayor's office, and I'm joined here today with Donna Estacio, who is director of the state relations. The charter and the mayor's executive directives establish a program by which the mayor is to present annually the federal and state legislative priorities to the city council. As part of that process, we have surveyed city departments, agencies, commissions to receive their legislative priorities. This year, because we are in a midterm, starting the second year of both the congressional and state legislative sessions, the focus of the report that you have before you today is on existing legislation, which has not been acted upon or reviewed by either the council or its committees or the mayor. So we want to stress that we are following hundreds of pieces of legislation, but some of the, most of those are things that have already, you've either taken positions on that we're still continuing to follow and support and lobby on behalf of, or things that are working their way through the process with this committee and with the council. So everything that you have before you, both in terms of the federal and state legislation, are existing pieces of legislation which have not had any action taken by anyone in the city before. I understand later on, when you have your hearing, I believe on the 19th, the CLA's office is also going to present some requests for legislation for sponsorship. But again, this only pertains to existing legislation. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Donna Estacio to present the state portion of her.
What's your name again?
Jim Clark, C-L-A-R-K-E.
Good afternoon. I'm Donna Estacio from the mayor's office. This document here is the state list of bills that we received from city departments. As Jim mentioned, we took a different approach this year in soliciting proposals, and we asked for legislation that we should be watching that impacts the city. Twofold benefits in doing it this way, we avoided duplication of what I understand to be the CLA and your committee's directive to departments for sponsorship ideas. Also, this is an attempt to really shift the role of the mayor and the council to proactive instead of reactive when it comes to state legislation. Very often, we are asked to move a position on a bill when, you know, it's at a critical juncture, either about to pass off the floor, about to pass out of committee, and whatnot. So this is an attempt to streamline and improve collaboration with the city council. The report before you includes bills that we were not previously tracking. So this is not at all the exhaustive list that we use in our office. It is the list that basically filled in the gaps that we had between what we were tracking and what departments were tracking. It's divided into six priority categories: economic development, education, energy, environment, housing and redevelopment, public safety, and transportation.
Public safety, would that include any juvenile justice legislation?
Yes.
Would it fall under public safety category?
Absolutely.
Okay. How about legislation that specifically deals with seniors or children? What category would they fall into?
Probably the education category, as the global way we categorize it here at the city.
I had an additional category that was opportunity and inclusion, and so a lot of that is in that as well, too.
Okay, all right. How did, is there direct or overlay collaboration between categories and tracking when it comes to the CLA and the mayor's office? Do they match, or kind of like match 90-some percent, and that works out just fine?
I actually, I'm not sure.
I don't know if the CLA's office actually has categories as such that they track by.
Right.
These tend to reflect areas that the mayor has expressed interest in following and making his priorities.
John Wickham with the CLA's office. We do have a process where we also review the legislation that's pending at both the state and the federal levels, and we have categories, we actually have 19 categories, I believe it is, and we send the notifications of all of those bills and subsequent changes to those bills out to the departments on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. As things change, we inform the departments of their activity on those bills.
Now, when it comes to tracking, whether it's the program that we use or the categories that we choose to fit them in, does the CLA's office match the categories as outlined here and as each one of us has in our binder for today's discussion?
We just received this revised list by these categories, so we will take this back and see how the categories fit together, and make sure that there's a correspondence between the two. We can always check by the bill number, though.
Sure. But, yes, we can always check by the bill number, but when it comes to categories, I think that's for us being able to glance at something or see what kind of efforts that have already been undertaken by the city, either the council or the mayor, would have you, whether it's in a certain process, or what, who's tracking it. The category portion is important to me, because, as you can see, we get presentations from the mayor's office, who by the current charter is the lead on these kinds of things when it comes to corresponding with various levels of government, yet at the same time, the city council counts on the CLA to do our end of the research and things of that nature when we have a certain interest as well. So it's important for me to see if we can go ahead and try to match those up as quickly and as easily as possible. Okay? So who would the CLA's office work with and the mayor's office in order to get that correspondence?
Me and Jim. Jim and I.
Okay, both Jim or Donna, either one. Okay, all right. This team within the mayor's office, who runs the team in the mayor's office?
That'd be the deputy mayor, which is Celine Codero, is the new deputy mayor for legislation and intergovernmental relations.
Okay.
And she's just been appointed in the last two weeks.
Okay. So Celine is the one that's been appointed in the last two weeks, and who, so therefore, in that structure, who are we talking to right now?
I do the federal relations, representing the mayor's office on federal relations.
And I handle all the state relations.
Mm-hmm.
And we have one more person who does local.
Okay, all right. Another person who does locals, such as jurisdictions surrounding us, county, et cetera?
Right.
Special districts, all those kinds of things? Okay. Miss Estacio, how long have you had this position?
A year and a half.
Year and a half. And Jim?
I've been in the position just two years this week, and spent four years on Capitol Hill as chief of staff for two L.A. congress members before that.
Four years on Capitol Hill. How do you like our winner?
I'm from L.A.
How did you like their win?
It wasn't as bad as it is this year.
Yeah, exactly. And Miss Estacio, as Jim explained, he was four years in the Capitol, as in Washington, D.C., right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that Capitol. What experience do you have when it comes to legislative matters at the state level?
I spent three years in the assembly. I was an assembly fellow for then Assembly Budget Chairman Tony Cardenas, and I spent two years.
Talk fast, you just lost Dennis Zine.
I knew that, he didn't know that.
The people listening don't know that.
That's three years.
Okay. So have you personally worked on legislation through the process in Sacramento?
Yes.
Okay. When I say Sacramento, I say state capital, in deference to former mayor of Sacramento. When we used to complain about Sacramento, we'd say Sacramento, because, no, we're the city of Sacramento, you mean the state capital. So you carried legislation through the state capital when you worked in a legislative office, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you feel confident and comfortable that you know the process?
Yes.
How familiar are you with the budget process, which tends to be the number-one complaint downhill for all of us local governments?
Extremely comfortable. I was a consultant on the budget committee. I handled general government, and it is probably, well, undoubtedly, the biggest issue that we'll have to play defense on this year. So we look forward to working with your committee as that develops. It was just released last Friday, and the subcommittee processes will be starting.
The governor's budget proposal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And as it works in the state Capitol, is it the governor who is the lead on the budget process, or is it the legislature?
I would say.
By reading the state constitution, I'm not talking about custom and practice, I'm talking about in the strictest nature when it comes to the state constitution. Who has jurisdiction? Is it the legislature when it comes to creating and voting on a budget, or is it the governor?
It, I think, leans towards the legislature, but lately, it's all about the big five, which, you know, obviously includes the legislature. But it's basically whittled down to those parties.
Mm-hmm. But that was a trick question. As a former budget chairman, I am personally not pleased with the custom and practice and the nature of the politics, and it happens throughout the country, and it even happens in Washington. The administrator, the governor or slash the president, puts out a budget, and then the legislature pretty much follows with about 90-plus percent of that budget, making changes or tweaks or major changes in some cases. But the bottom line is, the budget really works off of the proposed document by the governor or the president. In the state of California, it's my understanding, and where I stand, that the governor's proposal is just that, it's a proposal. It takes an action of the legislature to adopt it as the working document that they will work from. I have a problem, I've always had a problem with the legislature conceding to that, and I share that with you, because one of the things that we always have to be mindful of and understand, that we need to respectfully remind people of that, because custom and practice, people assume that that is the true structure. Custom and practice is just that, custom and practice. And the fact of the matter is, I think we would have better budgets if more of the legislators were allowed to interject and be a part of the process, rather than letting the governor send it through, and then pro forma, it comes down to the big five: four legislative members, the governor, and before you know it, we have a finalized budget with too many pieces missing, too many pieces that could have been worked on much, much better. And having been a former legislator myself, I not only was a victim of that, but also a participant, too. So I'm not trying to say that this legislature is any worse or any better than the legislative members, that I was a member of those bodies, but unfortunately, that's the way it works. But I wanted to have this dialogue with you, because I think it's important for us to understand, and also at the local level as well, that we have custom and practice, and we also have jurisdiction and authority, and we tend to follow custom and practice a little bit too much. So I'm sure you got trained very, very well, and you learned a lot in the state legislature. And working for the budget office is a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for anybody, so you're fortunate to have experienced it from that vantage point, because that is really the biggest responsibility of the legislature, or any legislature, is the budgeting. So you're fortunate to have that experience, and I'm sure that played into the mayor's office hiring you. If you don't mind, you look pretty young, so I want people listening and people on this committee to know a little bit about what you bring to the table beyond your legislative experience. What is your educational background?
I received my bachelor's degree from UCLA and my master's degree from Princeton.
From Princeton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Craig Smith's not on the committee, so he's not going to make a comment about UCLA or USC, so.
Or USC.
Yeah, well, you're not as vocal about it as.
No, I'm.
I know you love USC as much as he does.
I'm stealth.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. You don't carry a million keychains.
We're upset this week, so.
I'm sorry, we didn't open up with a moment of silence.
No, it's all right. We'll be all right.
Sorry for your loss.
It's just we're all kind of withdrawn right now.
Okay. Now, I have a technical question. If there are any legislative proposals that require changes to any state codes, please have the CLA forward those proposals to the mayor's office by the end of the week, so that they can go to the city council. Okay. Any questions? Any questions?
Senate Bill 60, on the transportation, would require the department to depart motor vehicles and the issuance of driver's license identification cards to issue licenses and cards that are in compliance with specified requirements of the Federal Real ID Act of 2005. I thought that Senator Deals was trying to get driver's licenses for folks that weren't legally in the country, and I do support that for identification, and when law enforcement stops, people's license, know who you're talking to. Is this a spin from what he was trying to do before? Compliance with the Real ID Act, because I don't think the Real ID Act would permit them to have one.
I believe it is his attempt at getting this bill done.
But that means they have to be, according to Real ID Act, they'd have to be a citizen.
I would have to look into that more.
Because he's been attempting, and I remember doing some news conferences in support of the licenses, but then I see the Real ID Act, 2005, I don't know how you can receive a license if you're not a citizen, which, to me, spins away from what he was trying to do.
Waters down probably the original intent of his.
Yeah, because, I mean, if you're a citizen, you can get a driver's license. But what he was trying to do is get them for non-citizens, but from the law enforcement perspective, someone who has a license, at least they know who they're talking to or dealing with, versus they don't know who the person is. So for public safety purposes, it's much better to have that, but I think with this Real ID Act, part of that Senate Bill 60, it really dilutes and neutralizes, if I'm interpreting it properly, and all I have is the summary. If you can look into that, find out if he's pulled away from his original intention.
I'll do that, and I'll circle back.
Thank you.
On your side.
Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah, I voted for it.
I think this is contrary to his original intention.
Yeah, that legislation has been carried consistently every time it gets vetoed, or it doesn't make it to the governor's desk, and there's a new legislative session. As an assemblyman now, and as a state senator, Sadio carried that legislation, it's been about a dozen, 13 years now, so.
But with this spin, that's a good question.
Unfortunately, what happens is all kinds of compromises get made, and if you probably look at the original bill that he introduced the first time, and this one, they're very, very, very different. But you bring up some good points. What we need to understand is, is there some kind of convolution here, or has it been watered down to the point where it really has no effect, tangible effect?
That's how I read it.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I'll definitely check into that.
Okay, but I think this council's gone on record supporting his original intention.
Absolutely, and so Chief Bratton did, and I haven't heard Chief Beck. I don't know what his position is on it as the new chief, but I would imagine, I don't want to speak for the current chief, but I would imagine it would be consistent, as you just pointed out, Dennis Zine, sheriffs, and even elected sheriffs in conservative counties have gone on record stating that, as Dennis Zine, former 35-plus years of.
Forty-one now.
Full-time 30-some years as a reserve. Anyway, 40-plus years of law enforcement experience right here in Los Angeles, as stated, that there are some practical reasons why this document should be afforded those individuals, certainly when it comes to public safety. We're much safer knowing who is on the streets, who's driving on our streets, especially when they come in contact with law enforcement, for law enforcement to know, for the community to know, and then we would actually have a lot more accurate, safe interaction with law enforcement, with these individuals as well. Because whether people like it or not, the millions of people who are in this country trying to make a better life, they're not going anywhere, because even, as I've heard something be said, in third-world countries versus the United States, when the United States has a cold, they have the flu real bad. So economically, people come here because they want to feed their families, and the last thing we need to do is kid ourselves into thinking that they're going to go back to starvation, just because they can't drive a car with a license. They will continue to thrive, they will continue to try to work hard, and for public safety purposes alone, it's enough to make sure that they have the ability to get a driver's license.
And those that do want to violate the law, at least law enforcement, will have an opportunity to apprehend those and know who they are.
It's his favorite part.
And it works both ways.
That's his favorite part.
Exactly.
It's his favorite.
I think Mr. Zine is talking about the bad guys that do things other than drive without a license.
Exactly.
Do bad things. Okay, so with that, thank you for the presentations. We'll go to public comment, but before you move away from the table, I just want to thank you, Jim, for all of your work, and you're probably going to be dialoguing with this committee on and off throughout the year. We appreciate all of your efforts and your professionalism. Same thing, Donna, you're going to be probably speaking before this committee unless you delegate somebody else to do it. But what I prefer, that when you do send somebody, you make sure that they know the answers to certainly not only the obvious questions, but some very, that they know the legislation that are going to be before us, so that they answer those questions. I've been frustrated sometimes with departments and sometimes with the mayor's office, that they'll send somebody, assuming that it's probably an easy dialogue and probably not very many questions, and then when we start asking some questions and delving into them, sometimes we get a little frustrated, because they, thank God, they honestly say, "I don't have that answer, I can get back to you." But the fact of the matter is, this hearing isn't just for the benefit of the legislative members, these hearings are for the benefit of the public, because that's who we all serve, and they deserve to have those questions answered as they come up. So with that, make sure that you do so. With that, I'm probably going to see you more often than you care to come to this committee. But at the same time, to you, Donna, understand this, I have a bad habit of being tougher on people that I know very well than people, lucky you, Jim, I haven't known you very well, but as I get to know you better, I'll maybe.
Looking forward to knowing you.
Yeah. I might get tougher with you, but the thing is, as you mentioned earlier.
My new BFF.
I love you, don't be.
As you mentioned earlier, Donna, you're willing to admit the fact that you got some of your experience while working for me, and you did a fine, fine job, yet at the same time, I want you to know that I support and am very proud of you, and you're going to do a great job, but at the same time, I'm going to be tough on you. Okay?
Uh-uh.
All right. Okay, with that, public comment. Is anybody here for public comment? We are on Item Number 1. Item Number 1 is open for public comment. I do not see any public comment cards before me. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on Item Number 1 during public comment? Okay, no members of the public coming forward. Public comment on Item Number 1 is now closed. So with that, we will, are we going to cover this again after the CLA?
Yeah, on the 19th.
Okay. So potentially, we'll be bringing this back on the 19th or after the 19th?
On the 19th.
On the 19th. If anything changes, we'll let you know, we'll let the mayor's office know. So with that, we'll put this item over till the 19th. And so that concludes all the items on today's agenda. We now open the committee for general public comment. If anybody's here to speak on something that's relative to this committee but was not agendized today, please come forward. agendized today, please come forward at this time. General public comment is now open. See no one come forward, and we do not have any public comment cards on general public comment. General public comment is now closed. With that, this committee's.
Wait, we're not done. Sergeant Zine is leaving.
What?
Sergeant Zine is leaving.
Aren't we done?
We're not done yet.
What else are you doing?
Just hang on.
This committee is now adjourned.
Okay, and I leave.